Dear Vice President, this is a special meeting of the District 200 School Board. Mr. Settsis, would you please call the board?
Mrs. Craig, here.
Mrs. Erickson.
Here.
Mr. Gambiani.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin.
Here.
Mr. Mepferson.
Here.
Mr. Paulson.
Here.
Mr. Rob.
Here. Mr. Spahler, do you two need to do the same question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda after the Pledge of Allegiance of Public Comments. We have the opportunity to speak to the board and provide for members of the public to have a question or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. The board will protect its civility in this forum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in your comments now. Please use the microphone, state your name, and address your comments to the board. Please leave your comments to three minutes. Mr. Paulson, over time, speakers. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or common sense to members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat or present your comments to us in writing. The first speaker I have signed up for tonight for the public comments is Jan Shaw.
Did you turn the mic on? Very good. I am Jan Shaw. I'd like to congratulate you on having the one-day referendum. I understand we will not have any preschool, no problem. I was very glad to see that you did it the right way and actually had a taxpayer's vote on it, and that you did a building that's the right size and a place that you can actually afford. The main reason I'm talking tonight is I'm questioning the fact that you're still looking to do it with a lease. I'm also questioning the fact that it didn't come out when we first did the lease, but when I did it for you, I found out that your plan for that lease, had you gone ahead last August, would have been $6.2 million for interest payments. I'm wondering if the people on the board and the people in the community knew about that. I also know that the only reason you were looking at a lease is you should have been informed that a lease got you out of the need to do a referendum. Now that you've had a successful referendum, there is absolutely no reason to do a lease. With a lease, in fact, that's not even a lease because it doesn't meet the criteria of a lease in that you are taking 100% of the responsibility, 100% of the cost, 100% of the authority. A lease usually has a way to get out of it should you decide you don't need the building, or if the building disappears, the owner of the building takes some responsibility. This lease had absolutely no responsibility for the owner. All they had to do was hold the title and take in the cash. So, I don't know why we wanted to release. I don't know why at this point we would even consider giving the building title to somebody other than the district. Furthermore, when it comes to the money, if you spend it out of reserves and your cash, and I don't know if you can actually do that now, but you'll come close. You'll have one or two months in which you will need to borrow money in order to keep bouncing checks. Two months at four or even six percent interest is a lot less than taking the whole thing for 20 years. If you think about it, if you've got a four percent interest rate and you borrowed that, say, for three months, which is a fourth of the year, that's approximately 1%. $10 million borrowed at 1% is only $100,000 a year. 20 years, $2 million, absolute max. And this saves you from saddling future schools, which are still paying off this lease constantly. The lease right now, the way I look at it is as if you're putting this on a credit card and you're sticking to somebody else who's paying the bills over time. So, I'm recommending that you consider looking. We need a five-year plan. We need to know what would it look like if I did this out of current cash? If we postponed some of the other building maintenance one or two years, can we make up the money? Do we have enough to pay that whole portion? And for the audience here, just to let you know, I emailed the board on Monday listed some information in terms of the fact that the building's going to be about $17 million plus whatever they do on interest and a couple of the tidbits. So, I really am hoping that this by Thanksgiving, you all will have a chance to read it. Thank you.
The next speaker I assign up for public comments is Joe Buckholz.
I just want to take a quick moment to just thank you guys for moving forward on behalf of the Buckholz family and the four children that have... Two of them that are currently in District 200 and gone through the special ed program, and two of them that are in college right now, with one of them with a full IEP. I appreciate you guys doing anything and everything you could to make this happen for the children now and for children you've already helped. So, I know there's always different opinions, but we're behind you and many are, as indicated on the lease. I am indicating on the referendum of over 70%, so thank you so much.
The next speaker I assign up to speak is Sam King.
All right. I will be quick because I brought my children here. So, I'm obviously a parent of kids in District 200. I'm also a homeowner in District 200. I pay taxes to District 200. I also recently co-chaired the political committee supporting the referendum, a question that recently passed with over 70% support from the community. So, I can speak on behalf of both myself and the many, many people that I spoke to via social media, on the telephone, and going door-to-door time and time again when I say that the vast majority of our community supports both the construction of the new early learning center and the financing that the board came up with, which was very clear throughout the campaign. I want to thank each of you for continuing to work towards this. We needed a suitable early learning center. You've all worked for it, some of you for many years. You've not given up, but you've found creative solutions to help address the concerns that were raised by some in the community over the years. The survey conducted after the failure of the 2017 referendum directly guided the content of the current referendum proposal that passed. So, I am very proud to be part... Sorry, I'm trying to... I'm kind of saying it by memory and kind of looking at my notes, but I'm proud to be part of this district because I feel like you've really found a collaborative solution to a problem that we were facing that keeps our public education strong. I'm a firm believer that that keeps our community strong. I'm speaking for many when I say you've earned our trust, and we believe you'll keep the community's best interests in mind as you determine all of the logistics of moving forward with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The final speaker I assign up is Mr. Greg Pickens.
Mr. Lieutenant Schuler, members of the board, thank you very much for all your efforts and time. I know that you put a lot into this for Jefferson School. I know that a lot of people did, so many of us are here today. But we wouldn't have it without a lot of your efforts and the brain power that you bring to this from your respective careers and experiences to help our community. So, I thank you very much for your efforts in that regard. In the last board meeting that we discussed the current status of Jefferson, I asked a question in regards to the amount of unfortunate taxpayer losses that we incurred due to the lawsuit filed about Jan Shaw and the delay of the school. And the number you came up with is approximately $150,000 in actual expenses added to the Jefferson Early Learning Center. I wanted to know if, tell me now, if you have any additional updates on that. I would like to know. We also know that the original plan prior to the unfortunate lawsuit that was filed was for the Jefferson School to be opened for the fall 2019 calendar year. That, of course, is not possible right now because of the unfortunate delay caused by the lawsuit. So, in the last board meeting, we discussed the possibilities of how do we move forward. But the plan was there. There were two possibilities. One was that we could incur an additional $750,000 because of the lawsuit. We should now bring it up to about $1 million of added expenses because of the lawsuit to open it when it was planned. Or to delay that until an opening in August of 2020. I'm not sure if there's any additional information you can provide in that regard as to what our plans are. And I wanted to address some of the things that I've heard in terms of the proposals as far as refinancing this. I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney for 25 years. I work in financial accounting. I work all over the world. I've worked with contracts where there's multinational large corporations. I routinely work on $100-plus million dollar contracts of varying designs. And I'll tell you that what you're doing is not for the amateurs. And I'm pleased that we don't have amateurs working on it. The... I think what a lot of people don't understand in our community is the manner and operations in which you operate. You operate in what's called the fund accounting mode, you know, operating what's called the Sherman Durbin's model. I don't understand what those things are. It probably would benefit many if, as part of our communications group, we could get a little bit of that information out. I recently attended a meeting with town hall with Jeanne Ives, where she admitted after some questioning from the audience that this district operates in, as expenses per student, 78 amongst all of the... We'll deal with 89 districts that are operating in the state. Now, you don't have to be a mathematician to figure out what that means. It's that, hey, about approximately 87% of every other school districts in this state are more expensive than we are to operate. Does anybody know what our ranking is currently in quality of our education?
Eighth.
Eighth. So, that means we do it better than 87% of people, but we have eighth in quality. I don't know about you. That sounds like a fairly well-known operation to me. So, we should not let the amateurs run our accounting. Should not let the amateurs run things like spend an hour on the cost of money. If you were to take monies from our operating or reserve accounts and plunk and take them all out and remove those from those accounts now to knock through the lease situation, you would lose that cost of money. And you... The lease process, as you described, is a perfectly reasonable one. The fact that you're going to spend money over time is you can spend the money more wisely.
Mr. Pickens, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, or action items, is the action item. The next item of consideration is a resolution approving the execution of a lease in escrow agreement among the district as lessor, Zion's Bank Corporation National Association, as lessor, and a member of native bank of Chicago as escrow agent with respect to early childhood center located within the district's boundaries pursuant to the provisions of Section 10-22.12 and Section 10-22.36 of the school code of the state of Illinois as amended and is approved by a referendum of the district held on the 6th day of November 2018 and provided for the issuance of not to exceed $14 million lease certificates to be issued by the district pursuant to Section 17b of the Local Government of Detroit Forum Act and that the Board of Education would consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of said certificates evidencing the rights and payment under lease agreement providing for the sale of said certificates. The resolution sets forth the parameters for the issuance of a said certificate and sale thereof by designated officials of the district and summarizes the certain terms of said parameters, including the specific parameters regarding the manner of sale, length of maturity, rates of interest, and the purchase price for said certificates. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mr. Roman. So, a couple of things that I want to do with the board, just to set a little context, and then certainly we can answer any questions, provide any additional information that the board has. Number one, before we even get into the particular resolution itself, I do just want to call the board's attention to the fact that in your green folders, we did give you a copy of the official canvas results from the referendum. Those did come through today, which really again sets the context for us doing what we're doing. So, you'll see the official canvas of the precinct totals does indicate that the referendum passed with 72%, just over 72%. Tax rate approval rate, $25,512. Yes votes, 9,884. No votes. So, you've got the breakdown by precincts, but I think as we shared with the board in the unofficial results right after the referendum, it did carry in all precincts within the school district, and so you have that breakdown. And so, with the official canvas results, we feel fully confident in moving forward with the project. I'm going to introduce Bob Lewis and ask Bob to come up to the podium. What I asked Bob to do tonight is just to review with the board a little bit of background information on the lease agreement and the incorporation of use of lease certificates as a part of that lease agreement. This is not new information for the board. This is consistent with the plan that we developed when we started this project a number of months ago. But because it's been a little while since we reviewed it before we get into specific discussion on the recommendation of the resolution, I thought it would be helpful for Bob to just spend a few minutes setting context. So, Bob?
Thank you, and congratulations as well on your referendum. Well, as was summarized in the reading of the preamble or the introductions of the documents, the document you have for tonight is Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Lease Certificates Pursuant to the Lease Agreement with Zion's Bank. As was mentioned, a member of native bank would be the escrow agent, and they would be assigned to pay the construction expenditures. The remaining $670,000 of $1.5 million capital development grant would also be paid into the escrow. If you remember, the district had pledged to use a million and a half of that grant towards this project, and you had already spent $830,000 of that prior to August in preparation for the construction. The plan contemplates issuance of about $15.5 million of lease certificates, which are issued in evidence of a lease with Zion's Bank. There's more to come on that in the next slide. I know before each night you have authorization to issue up to $14 million, and that's because the original project budget was $15.5 million, $14 million lease certificates, a million and a half from CDB grant, and when the bids were open, it was just a little over $15 million. So, you were able to lower the amount of the issuance by roughly $15 million. After the lease is terminated, the district would take ownership for $1. During that time, the district owns the land on which the building is constructed. The lessor would own the building, which is Zion's Bank. It's often misunderstood when school districts do lease certificates that the funding is coming from the lessor. While it could come from the lessor, most of the time it's set up so that the interest of the lessor is certificated in the form of a lease certificate, and those lease certificates are sold to investors, just like your general obligation bonds. So, the plan is to conduct a competitive sale, just like we did for the refunding bonds earlier this year, in which the district will request bids from underwriting firms. The bidders of those are City Bank, Robert W. Baird, Mesro Financial, just to name a few, that we hope will provide bids. The firm that provides the lowest true interest cost, or TIC as we call it, would be the one who is assigned and wins the lease certificates. And then that underwriting firm will take those lease certificates and redistribute them to their investor clients, which consists of banks, corporations, individuals, different types of exchange traded funds. So, those would be held by those types of investors, and Zion's Bank is not providing the funding. The annual debt service is payable from the operating funds. Specifically, the district has allocated or plans to allocate general state aid to make these payments annually through a deposit of general state aid into the debt service fund. So, there is... With any sort of certificate, they're not a bond, so there's no separate tax levy that is available to pay it. You have to pay it from within your operating funds. The maximum length of maturity is 20 years from the date of issuance. You can always consider something shorter than that, but the maximum you can go out is 20 years. And it's anticipated that the lease certificates will be callable on June 1st of 2026. Whenever we sell one of your municipal obligations that has a life longer than eight, nine, or 10 years, somewhere in that range, there's a call date assigned. It's typical practice in the school bond industry. That call date allows you the opportunity to refinance until a lower interest rate at that time or to consider changing the payment plan if you wanted to shorten it, if you will, or using some additional general state aid at that time to retire it, if indeed the district has the resources to do that. The timeline that's here is the board would approve these documentations tonight, if it's inclined to do so. I don't have on here, but tomorrow we have the grading call for this with Standard and Poor's. If you recall, earlier this year, you were upgraded by Standard and Poor's to AA+. And much of that upgrade was due to the restoration of the district's finances from where they had been with, you know, several years ago having had operating deficits, which had eroded your fund balance. The district has taken many strides to rebuild that fund balance to be in compliance with its fund balance policy. So, it's that, as well as the long track record of sound financial operations, your strong economy that led to that upgrade. And then we would deliver the proceeds of the lease certificates, or we would deliver, the winning bidder would deliver those proceeds to the escrow on December 47. And that would be the closing. At the same time, the investors assigned who purchased the lease certificates from the underwriter would be assigned their interest in those lease certificates. That's the sum of my presentation. Any questions?
Bob, I'm confused. Maybe I've got my numbers wrong, but it was my understanding when we started chatting early on with the $15 million in certificates, we were going to pay about $6 million in interest. I don't see that number. Am I incorrect in that statement?
Well, the earlier scenarios, we weren't... We were never showing the financing in the full $15 million. You're always contributing some cash. And so, at one point, we were amortizing $14 million worth of lease certificates, and that's now been reduced to $13.5 million from the fact that the budget came in lower. Now, the total debt service is approximately the same as it was with $13.5 million because the interest rates have increased since you would have sold them in August.
But weren't we talking about 5% money as opposed to 3.85% money at one point?
No. Yeah, at one point, we were estimating somewhere around 3.6, 3.7. I can't remember the exact rate.
Any other questions, Mr. Pickens? Joe?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, questions. Just to be clear again, the, you know, the term lease is defined... There's been commentary about whether this is a lease or a disguised financing or whatever it is. I mean, a lease is a lease. The state statutes authorize a lease, okay? And we pay a lease payment. The people that are going to buy it look at it maybe as an interest or whatever the case may be, but we're complying with the state code under the terms of a lease.
That's what your bond counsel has applied.
So, I can only rely on a bond counsel. And I say, and it doesn't really matter to me to be truthful. But, you know, the reality is, when we talk about it, the lease payment is determined by what interest rate or rate of return was by the investor that may buy that certificate.
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I look quick just while you're on the question from the board? So, also, board members in your green folder, anytime that you are working on issuance of lease certificates or general obligation bonds, you always have bond counsel that issues a letter of opinion. That happened in this case. Additionally, for the board, I did get a letter from your own attorney. So, from, can Floria Robin Schwartz, you have an opinion letter from counsel that clearly indicates that the lease agreement you are contemplating this evening is fully compliant with school code. He has no concern with the fact that it fits the legal definition of a lease, so you are fully compliant.
Again, why didn't we use a local bank to do whatever we're doing? In reality, Zion's Bank doesn't hold these. Is that correct? They're going to be an intermediary to sell to some other bidder that you talked about, who will then distribute or sell them, in effect, to third parties like me or anybody else in this room if they want to devise them. Isn't that a valid statement?
Yes. There... I mean, you could set up a lease situation, just like an installment contract. Except any sort of contract lease that you enter into and whoever you're doing that with, under the law, you can certify that and sell... Essentially, they're selling their interest in the lease to other investors, much like when you enter into a mortgage. A lot of times, the original bank you enter into ends up reselling that mortgage to, you know, someone else and it ends up getting pulled with other mortgages together.
We also... There was comments earlier about using only fund balance money, if you want to call it that, and then borrowing under TAWs. Do we not have a Phase Four refinancing coming up to refinance the remainder of the bonds, the old referendum bonds? And would it not, if we were... We had no reserves, no fund balance, and we were borrowing tax anticipation warrants, would that affect our interest rate that we would have to pay on those bonds? When we did Phase Three, because of our bond rating, we got... We saved $1 million in interest in the future. So, I would think that... I've worked in this field for over 50 years. You know, I would think if you're borrowing money on short-term through tax anticipation warrants, you're making a mistake, and you're going to incur higher interest rates on longer-term borrowing instead of that. Maybe that's not true, but I feel we...
Yeah, two thoughts on that statement. One, when you were upgraded earlier this year, when we initially got the report back from Standard and Poor's, they had not upgraded you. You were AA. And then when we went through the report, actually, Mr. Farley caught the detail that they had excluded some of your fund balance from the O&M fund by accident. I can't remember the exact amount. It's like $8 million or something like that. It was after he pointed out the error that they had not included that. They went back to committee, and then they upgraded you to AA+. And what you're able to read out of that, had your fund balance been where they initially thought it was, you would not have received that upgrade. So, if you were to spin the fund balance, it would likely change your credit rating, and would... That borrowing would probably cost about 10 basis points more. In addition, if you were to... If you were inclined to use fund balance to pay for more of this project, you would not only incur the cost that TAWs, there's also the opportunity cost. Because if you no longer had a fund balance, you're no longer investing that fund balance, earning interest on it. So, it's an additional cost of using those funds on top of the TAWs.
Okay. There was a comment earlier about this over $17 million of expense. I don't think that's a correct statement. I think that, as I've accumulated the numbers that we're looking at on this project, it's more of $16 million or something. Is that a valid number?
It is. In your green folder, and it was attached to the board report, you have the most recent budget summary from Leggett Architects. So, your total project cost is $16,273,000. That is inclusive of the $1.248 million in post-construction costs. But again, I just want to remind the board that we've been partnering with the Student Excellence Foundation to do some fundraising around some of those expenditures. So, while we've identified those as potential district expenditures on the back end, we are working on a fundraising effort to bring that in. So, the actual construction cost, $15,024, is inclusive of all fees. So, that is inclusive of all architect, engineer, and fees. That's your all-in construction cost. And we've been, from the beginning, I've seen certainly a couple of things that have suggested that we've not been transparent with all of those costs. This budget sheet that's attached is the budget sheet that Paul and Leggett have used from the beginning in this project. And so, these numbers have been out there from the very beginning. Every time the board has talked about, considered a cost in this project, it has been tracked on that same budget sheet. So, we've not hit any of the costs that are associated with this project.
And as another person spoke tonight, we've had... Because of the delay in the referendum process, we ended up with about at least $150,000 higher cost. But more significantly, I thought there was a reference to an extra $700,000. But more significantly, I thought there was a reference to an extra 700,000. I'm not aware of that extra 700,000. Does that mean anything to you? What does that have to do with it?
At the last board meeting, when we had contemplated an early start, so compressed early winter conditions start, that would have incurred an additional $750,000 in winter conditions. I think Joe had prepped that, that potential budget. The board expressed any interest in incurring that additional cost. And so, that option was, was moved to the side in the timeline that you're considering. But your two costs too, and just, just for the purpose of bringing clarity around that. So if you do pull out the, the project cost sheet that you have that has the Leggett Architects and Nicholas logo on the top, if you go to page three of that document, there are two places where you're going to see the additional cost incurred as a result of the delayed start. Number one is under the sub, the subtotal, subtotal construction cost, 11,145,000. That's about $14,000 higher than it was the last time that you saw this document. Joe can speak to greater detail on which of the contractors, I think it was a steel contractor, that incurred that additional cost. The other place where you're going to see the difference is if you go down to the general conditions, and you see the difference between what was anticipated as a 12-month construction timeline to now a 20-month construction schedule. And so, in that, you see the difference between the general conditions number that was 880,920, and is now 1,600,000. So I believe by my math, that's just under 120,000. Is where you get the, the two differences in terms of the, the cost override. Now, we've shown you on the sheet where we are carrying a construction contingency. So we backed some of those dollars out of available construction contingency. So you are, you are spending money that you might not otherwise have had to spend, obviously by already dipping into your, your construction contingency. But that's where you're going to find the two costs generally.
Okay. And then when I look at this, Bob, on the 13 million dollar lease certificate, and that's the number we're talking about here tonight, right? 13 and a half million. Okay, there are, there's two payment schedules here. And one, on average, is about 1,186,000 if we did a 15-year program. And if we did a 20-year lease, it's about 960,000, 70,000. Okay. What did we say in our documents that we published with the community? What did we say the lease payment would be?
We've been pretty consistent in sharing that it'd be about a million dollars, just under a million dollars.
Okay, and what did we say we were going to sell?
We, we were anticipating selling 14 million in, in lease certificates. And so again, our recommendation in that number at 13.5, obviously, the recommendation, the parameters resolution, was built on selling up to 14 million. Because the construction cost came in, about a half a million dollars under budget, our recommendation is that you sell less in lease certificate, thus incurring less in, in any of those far costs. Your other option would be to still sell 14 million and simply reduce what was the district direct contribution out of fund balance. But you've made that million and a half contribution directly out of fund balance. We recommend that you continue to operate under that.
So it'd be consistent with what we did in the regular random, which we haven't figured out. I don't even know how we would consider anything else. Bob, are these things, are these numbers actual? I mean, can they vary based on what's going to happen when we sell them?
They could be somewhat different. We've assumed current market conditions as of November 19th plus an additional 0.1%. So until they're actually sold on December 10th, these are subject to change. Since we did the update, there's been a whole lot of change in the market. So if, you know, today, rates, they ticked down ever so slightly. Some of the press speak of the Fed that came out indicated that perhaps.
Could have been neutral.
Correct, correct. A little more true.
Back in August, when we first approved the lease agreement, which was then delayed by the lawsuit, what interest rate did we consider at that time? What was our rate? And did it go up? Because there's been increases in the Federal Reserve, essentially.
Well, when we were running this analysis before, we were doing it at current market plus an additional, I can't remember if it was a quarter percent or a half a percent off the top of my head.
It was 25 basis points.
It was 25. So we've removed 15 basis points of the conservative factor because you're so close to the date. Generally speaking, you know, depending on your yield curve, I would say roughly it's a quarter percent higher now. I can give you a more precise answer via emails and all those bills, but they outhigher on this to me about a quarter percent.
So that, in effect, is another delay cost that isn't in these numbers. I mean, is that true? I mean, I mean, it's a quarter percent over, over 20 years on 15 million dollars or 13 million dollars. So it's another cost we incur. So just to be clear on that. Okay, so what, now, again, what, tonight, we're ready to approve the lease agreement, and we're ready to approve, we're looking to approve the term of 20 years on 13 and a half million dollars.
Yeah, what you're, what you're approving tonight is the lease agreement and the parameters resolution. Certainly unless the board needs additional time to vet out the term, I would go, I would suggest that you go ahead and work through and identify the term of that lease agreement as well, so that when, when Bob is ready, that we can put those out to competitive sale. But technically, what you're approving tonight is the lease agreement and the resolution that authorizes us to sell up to 14 million dollars. We don't intend to do that. We intend to sell 13 and a half. And it would be helpful to have some discussion if there is any concern with what has been the original recommendation to operate under a 20-year schedule. I think that's what we've talked about throughout as, as we've gone through here. One other thing, can I just roll, roll quickly, and then we should probably get the, the actual resolution right out onto the table for, for discussion. There has also been some feedback to the board, I think via communications, about concern that the lease agreement is the wrong structure to, to use. And, and I think some of that question or concern has come with, is there risk associated with the transfer of the building to another party? I'm going to tell you that your lease is written very solid, so that the risk to the district is extremely minimal. So certainly, we are transferring ownership of the building to another entity over the, the life of the, the lease term. But the, the lease is written in a way that even if the bank that you're working with, Zion's Bank, if Zion's Bank were, for whatever reason, to go under and somebody else came in and assumed that lease, that person does not have the authority to just come in, assume the lease, and say, hey, District 200, you're out. We have a lease. And we have a lease that as long as we meet the terms of the lease, we pay our bills. At the end of this lease, we're going to have the option of buying this building for a dollar. So that risk of losing ownership somewhere really is minimal. And so, I, I think when you're kind of analyzing, gosh, is there one structure of finance that would be better than the other? It's really a financial analysis, and the financial analysis is going to tell you the cost is going to be exactly the same. Whether you issued debt certificates, whether you considered, you know, alternate bonds, any type of borrowing structure where we're paying back out of our operating dollars, which is what we've pledged to the community, we're doing, and we intend to do, your cost of finance is going to be very similar. So I, certainly, somebody could say debt certificates are better than operating through a lease. I think that's personal opinion. I don't know that there is one structure that is any better, because I think your risk factors associated with that transfer of ownership through a lease are minimal.
Comment on that, just, you know, I've worked in this industry for many years, both commercial and school districts. And in reality, this is a bill to sue. You don't get out of a lease, you know. There, it's just fact of life, this is the way a lease is written. And also, just one other item, and that is that when I read the ballot that the 70-plus percent of people voted on, it said that they were authorizing a bill and equip a new early learning center without a separate property tax to finance the cost. Okay? I mean, it, it clearly states we're financing the cost. So I think if someone implies that we're not going to pay interest on that financing, that's absurd. I, you know, so I, I don't know where all those comments come from at times. It's ridiculous. And I'm sorry to prolong the program.
I do have one more point of clarity here. I don't know if this is for Bob or someone here at the table. So we put in, back in August or whatever, I think we put in 1.5 million in the escrow, right? According to this document, we spent about 830,000. Because my understanding, we had to forego the balance of that money. It tells me here it's going back into escrow. Because I thought there was a penalty for canceling that lease.
No, so that, the balance of that money was returned to the district. So the language in the lease said, at the point that that lease was canceled, the money was returned to the, to the school district. So basically, money came back to the district. Now, upon execution of a new lease, it's going to go right back into the escrow account.
Any other questions? Joe, do you have a comment?
If there are no other questions or comments, go ahead.
No question, no. No question, just a comment that I'm good with a 20-year amortization. Did 25,512 voters support the plan? I want to stick with that. Just like we presented it. Pretty simple.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I just.
Here?
I just.
Mr.?
I'd like to stay focused on what Dr. Schuler said. Let's vote on the resolution relative to the lease certificates. And I think we have to maybe just step back and figure out if it's going to be 20 or 15, whether the Finance Committee does that, or the board does that at another point. I think there's some legitimacy in looking at a five-year forecast, seeing what a 15-year has impact to us versus 20. I won't, I won't delay the decision or the resolution for the lease, but I think, I just think it's, and I'll defer to my Finance Committee member over here if he has any input on that. But I just, I would like to at least explore it. That's personal preference, but if the others don't agree with that, so do I.
You know, I'll comment on that as another Finance Committee member. Basically, I think that we, when we see a five-year projection, as we've seen in the past leading up to it, we have many challenges going forward as far as improvements, the Sherman Dirges concept, if you want to call it that. So if we were to spend another 100, almost 200,000 a year, it would erode from our ability to fund those other projects that the Sherman Dirges program is trying to achieve. So I think, you know, to, to consider that would be, again, I, I think, as Brad said, you know, we've, this is what we've approved, what we put in front of the public, and they, they've agreed to it, you know, extraordinarily. And, you know, I need to lay this point, I just don't see any reason to consider it.
May I confer on that conclusion? We have three objectives for our facilities. One was a secured entry. One was a new early childhood learning center. And one was to do some major capital improvements, trying to live under the Sherman Dirges principle we adopted a year and a half, almost two years ago. We've got the secured entries. We're about to approve, I think, a resolution that will allow us to proceed with new early childhood learning center. But we still have that obligation for capital maintenance projects throughout our district here. And our buildings need money to do that. And if we can enter into a 20-year lease and have additional 200,000 dollars a year that we can put forward to capital improvements, I think we have major end results in achieving that third objective.
I would say that that third point is, the Facility Committee is working on it. Those capital improvement priorities, Finance Committee is certainly working on it. So as these two committees work independently, but kind of in, in, in concert with each other, we're going to beginning develop a plan to accomplish, excuse me, about that third point.
Any other comments or questions? Rob?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we stick to what we said. Above approximately a million dollars. And I, I think secondly, I like the idea of keeping it below that number and 20-year just makes it more sense to me. One, consistent with what we said. Secondly, conservative with what we have coming out of us. And I, I think the last thing is, we have flexibility down the road. When the call comes, we can, we can identify where we've come and what we've been doing, and adjust on it. And so, those three factors alone, along with, I'll just add, and it's already been said, but our believable opinions we've been talking about, all the work of the staff and the diligence and the Finance Committee going through this, and the soundness of the agreement and our partner in that agreement. So I'm very comfortable with that 20-year. But I think consistency with what we said is significantly important, given that we just come through a vote, and that vote of confidence was given to us. And we stick to that, and we stick to what we said. It's extremely important for the future of the district.
Any other comments or questions? There are none. I'm going to ask the Secretary of State, Secretary of State, to read the title of the resolution.
Excuse me, my voice is a little, little bad tonight. So, "Resolution Authorizing and Providing for a Lease Agreement For the Purpose of Building and Equipping a New Early Childhood Center In and For Community Unit School District Number 200, DuPage County, Illinois." And further authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $14 million lease certificates of said school district in accordance with said lease agreement, evidencing the right to payment under said lease agreement, providing for the security and for the means of payment under said lease agreement of said certificates, and authorizing the sale of said certificates to the purchaser thereof.
We have a motion on the second to adopt that resolution as presented and read by title.
Subwoofer.
Do you have Mr. Paulson? Second, Mr. Matheson. Are there any additional comments or questions with respect to the resolution? There are none. Mrs. Hutcherson, would you please call a vote?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy? Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm?
A resounding, a resounding yes, even though my mic has been cut off by someone. A resounding yes. The motion to adopt that resolution as presented and read by title has passed. I do have to, have to state this specifically, gentlemen, now that I speak. The motion carried, said resolution adopted, approved, and signed in open meeting directing the Board Secretary to record the same in the records of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 200, DuPage County, Illinois. And Mrs. Hutcherson? As an attorney, I think I've signed my name over 10,000 times. This is probably one of the most realist times. Eat out of the book. Do you have something else?
Yeah, I, I just want to comment on one thing. And I, I want to thank Bob Lewis and PMA for, for guiding us through this process, presenting us with many alternatives. And in reality, I think there was a comment earlier again about we, we went to this lease approach to avoid a referendum. That's not true. We went to a lease approach so that we wouldn't have to deal with graph card. And we want, we listened to our community, and we, we looked at an alternative. And that, I believe, Bob was very instrumental in guiding us in that direction. And I appreciate that very much. And I think it made a lot of people, including me. So that was good. Thanks.
All right. The next item on the agenda is approval and assignment of contracts and approval of building permit for the early childhood center. Dr. Schur?
Thank you. So I'm going to invite Joe, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium just in case there are any comments or questions. So the second, obviously, action this evening is the approval of the bids, the contracts, for the Johnson Early Learning Center. I have to give a huge thank you to Joe and, and his team. So I, just to be crystal clear, the bids that you're approving tonight, all of the contractors were not obligated to hold their bids at the level that they did. This is going beyond what was, was obligated in the bid. And so, I, I just, I want to, want to be clear that I think that's a function of a couple of things. Obviously, I think the project is attractive to the, to the contractors. The district is attractive to the contractors. But it also speaks, I think, the relationships that, that Joe and his team, Paul and Patrick and their team at Leggett have with those contractors, that they were willing to, to do this. So Joe. So Joe, do you want to just comment on what really was very minimal upcharge over the original bids?
Yeah. So after reaching out to all the contractors, there's two proposed cost impacts. One from the structural steel contractor, which was a direct passer from the Joyce manufacturer for some increase in, in steel material. And then secondly was HVAC, mechanical contractor. He had some additional premium labor hours for labor performed beyond June twenty nineteen. So all in all, twelve million dollars approximately worth of work. And approximately fourteen thousand dollar impact direct from the hard cost of construction was absolutely phenomenal. So we're really happy with the feedback that we received.
Any questions of Joe or staff?
Can I just have one more quick, quick comment in terms of the schedule? So we mentioned earlier in the, the document from Leggett and Nicholas that shows a twenty-month construction timeline around general conditions. At our last meeting, we had some conversation about even if we don't start winter conditions, if we, we really wait to start that, that building pad late March, early April, depending on the, the spring, is it still possible that we could operate under a timeline that may have the, the building ready by the, the end of the year? And so I just did, wanted to share with the board. I did spend some time with Stephanie and her staff after that meeting, just talking about that potential of a, of a mid-year transition. And there, while I will tell you that anybody that's going to teach in this new building would love to get in this new building as quickly as possible because it is going to be a, a very nice facility, it's going to serve our early learners. There are a couple of points that I think are potentially problematic, even if we are able to compress that schedule a little bit. Number one, a couple of your grant-funded preschool programs have a requirement that DCFS, DCFS approve that facility. That approval process does take a little time. And so not possible that if the building is done and you literally have a couple of weeks to transition, I don't know that we would have enough time for that approval process to, to take place. I think Stephanie has shared that it can, that can take a couple of months to get that approval of the, the facility. Part of that approval does also involve looking at safety issues around where students are traveling, playgrounds, some of those pieces. And so again, if we finish in the middle of the year, there's some key components to the building that are not going to be done and may be a little bit problematic on, on a few of those. So while I understand the, the desire to, to move, I do think a more realistic transition timeline is to target having the building done so that it's opening at the start of the two thousand twenty school year. I don't, I don't think, you know, even in that mid-year transition, I think that'd be a bit problematic. We've got staff that do amazing work with, with kids, but they were a little bit concerned about that potential transition in the middle of the year. And what would that do to students that really have worked hard to settle into a routine? And we're talking to students that work very hard around routines, having spent time in the, their early learning classrooms. They do an amazing job, but a lot of it is about building structure, routine. And so again, yet the Bush wouldn't recommend that, that we, we push for that more based on the reality that kids are serving.
Since I'm the one that brought that, I thank you for that research. I just wanted to make sure we vetted all those issues.
Any other comments or questions? Here are none. I ask for a vote. You do?
I just want to make sure everybody understands that these contractors that we're awarding were competitively bid publicly. So the bidding process that we're required to go through that was led, was a public bid process. So this is the lowest response of bidders. There was one issue that we're not, what's called plumbing, had to withdraw their bid, which is not uncommon in, in public bidding process. So, and, and in that, we also had the opportunity to accept eight alternate bids, I believe, that we were hoping that we were going to be able to get. So even though we were below budget, we still were able to capture those alternates. And then within our overall budget, just to point out for the, for the board, we still have five hundred sixty-two thousand dollars of collective contingency that is not allocated yet. It will, I believe, be part of the money we put into the escrow. So, so overall, the, the overall budget and the cost and the bidding process is, is through time.
Any other comments or questions from the boardroom? Here are none. I ask for a motion on second to approve and assign contracts and approve the building permit for the early childhood center as presented.
Send it.
Move on Mrs. Crabtree?
Send it.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I, I recognize names of customers of the bank that I'm on the board of, and I think I better abstain on the vote for that reason. So I abstain.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gromit?
Yes. The motion to approve assigned contracts and approve the building permit for the early childhood center as presented has passed. Before we adjourn, I want to extend my personal thanks to Joe and Nicholas for the great work we've done on these projects.
So... Can I just mention real quick then in, in closing our transition? So based on what the board has, has approved this evening, that site will mobilize after the first of the, the year. So even though we're not constructing that building pad until we get to, to spring, we will begin immediately in kind of late January, there's some work out on the site as the geothermal wells begin to, to get drilled. And so we are targeting, I think we've completely firmed up the details, but we're targeting a groundbreaking for like the second week in January. As soon as we get that, that drill, that rig out there to start drilling that first well for the, the geothermal, we're going to plan a, a groundbreaking around that. So it's going to be a little colder groundbreaking than we had originally planned. But nonetheless, I think this will be a great opportunity for us to make sure we invite the community and, and obviously all those interested to, to join us as we start to move some of that, that work.
It may be obvious, but I think it's important that we thank the community for their trust and the way the vote played out. It was such a strong support of trust and confidence. That meant a lot to me, that not only we're doing the right thing, but that we're aligned as a community, and that's, that's a big deal. So I really appreciate that. Secondly, you know, our staff doesn't get a lot of recognition, but the hard work of the staff going through the process, and you as well, Jeff and Dr. Schuler, fantastic. And just how the process has played out has been very impressive to me. Being, you know, a relative of the unit of the board, it's, it's really been, I'm proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Rob, well said. Well, okay, I've been heard that. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, subwoofer. Move on. Move on Mr. Paulson. Seconded by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the roll? Or can we do a spot of voice? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or no opposed? As the last time, as the president of the school, I hereby adjourn.